Can't hear us, the audio is not on.
Thank you.
Oh, there we go. Hi Jackie.
President.
President.
Present.
Full house. I do have a request to excuse Councilmember Overhauser from our August twenty sixth meeting.
So moved.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Overhauser from our August twenty sixth council meeting, all in favor say aye.
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 Excuse her. And before we move on to item D, I'd like to ask for a motion to add an information item to discuss the draft Teamsters Union contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second to add an information item for us to discuss a draft of the Teamsters Union contract, all in favor say aye.
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 Post nay, thank you, we'll add that to our information item for this evening. Uh, item D, citizen comments, this is an opportunity for our, the public to provide comments to our city council. And I'm gonna offer that up to anybody here in the crowd first. Anybody? How about anybody that's joining us via Zoom? Just raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Okay, let's move on to our July twenty second regular city council meeting minutes. You've had an opportunity to review those, if there's no changes to those, I'd accept the motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second to approve our minutes from our regular city council meeting on July twenty second, all in favor say aye.
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 Post nay, thank you, our minutes are approved. Uh, and also our special joint city council and planning commission meeting minutes are also there for your consideration to approve.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second to approve our August fourth special joint city council planning commission meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
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 Post nay, thank you, those minutes are approved as well. Uh, vouchers and payroll, who's kicking that off? Do we wanna do that Carrie, thank you.
I don't even have the correct sheets.
Actually, I can, I can do it if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, vouchers of two million five hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars and six cents. Uh, other payables of fifty thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents. And July payroll, one million four hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items, I would move approval.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and second to approve our vouchers and payroll as presented, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick one, uh, probably for Todd, uh, the DW excavating for over a million, is that for Purple Pie?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, good question, uh, I do have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Vouchers and payroll are approved, thank you. There is a, a lot of small contracts on the agenda there, filling up those programs for sure. Now, let's go on to information items, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to get this posted on our website, but it is available to anybody that wishes to, to review. Um, it's basically a redline version of a negotiated contract in draft form, it's not approved, I'm not asking for any action items. I just wanted to introduce the negotiations thus far with the Teamsters Union, which includes two folks, the police support specialists down at our police department. With a little bit of background. The, i- it's a, it's a reopening of the contract, it's a twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six contract that's approved. But there's a provision inside that contract that allows for reopening of it. And let me back up even again. So when we moved dispatch to Shrek. We held on, or we have two public or police support specialists that are still in the Teamsters Union, so at that time, we didn't know really what their overall job responsibilities were gonna end up, so we added a provision to reopen the contract to discuss wages and other things along the way, so. Um, so page eight, you've got the redline version, there's quite a few things in here. Just a few things that I wanted to share with you is, uh, we negotiated a twenty twenty-five wage increase of five percent. And a twenty twenty-six wage increase of three point five percent. On page nine, this is a big one. The police support specialists have agreed to be removed from the city's health benefit plan, A W C. And to receive their insurance through the Inland Empire Teamsters Trust Plan. Now, shifting to this plan will increase their out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, and so they are requesting that the savings to the city be paid to them, to the employees. Now, during negotiations, we're amenable to this arrangement as long as there's a net zero impact to the city, uh, financially. Um, the other, and it doesn't reduce their insurance, it's just a different plan that's gonna provide that insurance. Also on page, uh, let me see, where are we at, page, page eleven. Uh, was negotiated to increase their VBA contribution to one hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then finally, uh, vacation time, this is on page thirteen, we cleaned that up to make it very clear and updated some of the hours earned based on longevity. As employee of the city. So those are the main items that were changed, um, Mike and I both negotiated this contract over the last probably six, eight weeks now. And, and at this point, it's an informational item, I wanted to present it to you all for your review, won't bring it back until next council for final revisions. Did want to open it up for discussion if anybody has any questions for myself or Mike. Or comments on some of the changes from the last from the last contract to this updated contract. I hope I captured all that, Mike, I think I got it all in there, okay. No, but yes.
Which is gonna, this, to clarify this, so this still is for the same timeframe through end of twenty twenty-six?
It is, it'll still be a twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six contract, um, it was just agreed upon to open it up to discuss twenty-five and twenty-six, because we just know the level of duties that were gonna be added to them.
Okay.
After dispatch left, so we had an idea at the beginning, but it is kind of morphed over time.
And then is it re- like retroactive and, oh, it is retroactive, okay.
Yeah, so the twenty twenty-five portion would be retroactive.
Just to the beginning of twenty twenty-five, not to twenty twenty?
Nope, twenty twenty-four's already been negotiated, twenty, this is.
This will be twenty-five.
Yep.
Just a quick one, um, for the vacation time. Uh, maybe I have it misunderstood it, but was the state of Washington now requiring a certain accrual rate based on years worked? And is that, um, does that match that?
Uh, the state doesn't have a requirement, this is all negotiated individually with each of our six contract, our union contracts.
Okay, so we can negotiate that.
Little different, however we want, okay, great.
Yep.
Yeah, if you look at all the different union contracts, they're, they're all, a lot of them are different. Yes, please, Paul.
Yeah, and I, I know, uh, in finance committee, you know, you mentioned that there was added language to disenroll from the A W C. Medical plan and and when I look at the language. I, I can just tell you straight up, I would not be in support of the new Article ten with regard to disenrolling, I think there's a couple of things going on, I look at all the language you've had to add just to squeeze this thing in, in the hope that they might be able to pocket some money. I can understand that, but oh. Health insurance is through A W C is, you know, pretty good program, we start getting into contracts and then others with the me too that wanna get out, we're gonna put our entire enrollment up, uh, we have to have a minimum number, I know two isn't gonna break that, but uh, I worry about that part, and second, if you look at everything you have to do now in order to accommodate that, to me is that, uh, the squeeze isn't worth the dues, and I would, would not be in favor of that. And it's just another, as a question, I know we've, uh, as an attachment, we're attaching the job descriptions now to the, to the agreements.
Well, and we wanted to also show the additional duties, because that's why it was re- reopened. Um, because this was a new position to the city. So the agreement was to reopen this after, after a year of their performance. And update their job description to show if there's any additional duties to their jobs since when they first started.
Yeah, but it's, is it part of the agreement now?
Well, there was additional compensation that they were looking for in the pay raises based upon additional duties. And so we wanted to make sure that was captured in the agreement itself too, so that they didn't we didn't have them coming back the next time around and saying that we're having all these additional duties, and so therefore we need.
But historically, we've never really done that before.
Because then it's part of the contract and you're not able to change those descriptions very easily, is that your concern?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a little bit outside the norm. Where we would have job descriptions and but I've never had them as part of the, the bargaining agreement per se, and I don't know if that's another one we wanna shy away from, your honor, I'm
Okay.
A little dubious about that as well, we're.
Maybe it could be covered in a cover letter or something instead of.
Check that out actually.
There's other ways.
Yeah, because it, once it's in there, then it's and again, it's another, do we wanna start down this trail and so I would look at those two, uh, and I would reserve the right, I guess, when we come back next, I'll see if there's anything else, but those two just jumped out at me then, gone, yeah, man. But, uh, it seems to be working as far as the help and what we intended to do. You know, there's being non-commissioned folks that can do the kind of the day-to-day, so I get that, but those would be my two concerns when we circle back.
Okay.
Thank you.
What else, have any comments, discussion points on many changes?
I'm not sure what that, just to add on to something Paul's concerns, I, I'm not sure what, I'm sure they've done their calculations and all and, and feel as though that you know, there's money in their pocket, but gonna pay federal income tax on it. That's not gonna be, like, it's not gonna be a break even, they're, they're not gonna get, but like I say, they may have calculated it all out.
Glad you brought that up, because we, that's why we added the net zero, because we have to calculate, because technically
Right.
That would be income, so we would have to reduce the
Yeah.
Department of Retirement Services contribution
Right.
All that stuff from it, so that it ends up being a net zero to the city. But you're, but you're right.
That's a lot, and that's, again, that's a lot of opportunity for mistakes in the accounting system. Uh, one more whole separate audit situation, I mean, there, yeah, there's, there's deeper complications, I think.
I could just dovetail a little bit off of that, I guess, as a general comment, I think this is a pretty unique contract, open it up. Uh, general speak, generally speaking, I'm not a fan of retro pay. And in this instance, I could see it, but in future contracts, I'm not a fan of retro pay.
We're committed to having contracts approved, uh, prior to them starting. And we've already opened up a couple of union contracts for twenty twenty-six already, so, but no, that's a good point. I don't like retro pay either. Mark, Danielle, Jason, have you guys had anything?
Not yet, no.
Jackie, I'll get this to you. Copy of this for your review. Oh, oh.
Thank you, and you, yeah, so far I did agree, sorry, I was reading through the agenda, I had the agenda tab open as well. Um, no, I agree with Paul though, like, I do have some concerns about the language, about the switching, um, health plans and stuff, so I would like to review it further as well.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Hey, well, I appreciate the discussion, we'll move on to action items, so our first one is resolution where am I at here, F four oh two, twenty twenty-five charges and fees, Todd Abelman, Public Works slash Coast City Administrator.
I'll, I'll take this for Cindy, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna step up here and, uh, talk about, uh, getting the fees into the fee resolution. And, uh, it's a, it's, it's referred to as seven and eight, uh, to that end, but I'd also like to kind of give an update on the Aquatic Center, uh, some of the statistics as it were, come, as we're moving along, so right now, we're in day twenty-nine. Uh, we had a number, uh, fifty-nine public swim sessions. We have paid public swim sessions, we have thirty-eight. And, uh, we have had twenty-one free public swims as of today. And then, uh, we're looking at another twelve days until we somewhat officially close the pool, but if we make that extension, we're gonna have a lot more uh, free swims over those next couple of weeks. Uh, total, uh, public swim attendings as of now is just thirteen thousand four hundred. So during our free swim, uh, attendings, we usually get about three hundred and twenty to three hundred and seventy. And then our paid attendings, uh, right about, uh, one fifty to one seventy. But that makes our whole average attendance total of about a little over five hundred or five hundred and eighteen. So when we talk about, uh.
Todd, just to clarify, because there's two sessions, right?
So, yeah, yeah, there, there is, there is two sessions on that. Um, so when we talk about the fees, the fees were, were pretty much developed by a study, and then we did a lot of research with the Eastern Washington Aquatics Network. Uh, so we pulled off the study of the aquatics facility, and so during this time, we're trying to, uh, gather up all the data, so we can really do uh, uh, you know, cost recovery and what that looks like. But with the cost recovery, I'd have to, uh, also say that seven thousand dollars, uh, went to swim lessons scholarships. Uh, we have had total pledges right now, and, and we have, uh, total pledges of four hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of that received, two hundred one thousand eight hundred, and what's the remaining pledge of two hundred and eleven thousand six fifty. Um, so we're, we're, we're doing very good, and I'll, I'll, I'll give all that credit to Dan Curley, which, uh, uh, I'd like to announce, Dan is stepping in as a park and rec director. Uh, and, and he's gonna kind of take the helm on this. Um, we also did ten thousand dollars, uh, at the, um, uh, outreach, we gave him ten thousand dollars for Aquatic Center uh, entrance fees and another ten thousand for the echo program. So we are, uh, you know, kind of sensitive to, uh, you know, concerns about the price, and, and I think as we move through the budget season and we look towards setting the, the rates for next year, uh, we'll have that discussion, but it's all gonna be kind of discussed around, uh, cost recovery. Uh, so, uh, within the next maybe three to four weeks, we'll have some accurate numbers, we can let you know really what it takes to run this aquatics facility, how much cost, how much to be expected as we move into the twenty twenty-six session, so with that, I'd be happy to attain any questions, but, uh, basically, the, the, uh, the, the fee schedule is set, we did input, uh, the fees that we have, uh, in there. Uh, typically, it's on the brochure too, so we, we need to kind of identify and put in the fees, that, the correct fees in relation to the brochures, so. But that'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Todd.
I just had a question about the family pass, because I've been asked this a lot, so I just, I see it in here, and I thought that that wasn't gonna be and I also don't see season pass, so I just wanted to clarify.
It was one that we, we, we went ahead and put in, and like I say, we don't have that many days, I mean, we're cut out thirty days, uh, uh, of that, and I know that was, was a discussion. Um, I, I don't know, Dan can lend it, but that was, was kind of, the fees were kind of there, whether it was not brought out, uh, to that end, but we went ahead and put all the fees in there.
Okay, and so for the family pass, can you explain what that covered, I just wanna, I've been asked this question a, a lot.
Well, I might have to refer to Dan, but I think, uh, uh, I, I think it's a certain amount of swims for up to five. Is it five people? Five.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other good question, any other questions, Mark?
Sorry, just to clarify, so the family pass isn't for the whole season?
Yeah. It is, it is. Based off two adults, three children. For the full season, it's really good deal.
Yeah.
Look, the data rate being seven dollars on the high.
Yeah, takes it to five.
Fourteen days and then you break even, so it's a really, like a guy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I think it's important too that this will be brought back for, uh, you know, review again before swims season next year, sea eleven. This just makes it official for right now, for the last couple of weeks. But then, then you'll need to take a look and see how you wanna do that from here on after.
Yeah, we talked about this a little bit in finance, I'm assuming that all of these fees will be brought in during the budget season of twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-six. So that you'll have this year's data to work from, and I, I'm sure it's difficult with the first year for staff to know exactly what is right, and but uh, we'll have a better sense after, um, after the season is up and getting ready for next year. So, and, and I'm sure for you, this'll kind of be in flux for a number of years is my feeling, because it's so new.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we will have a, you know, kind of a daily operation cost, what that, and what that costs, and we have to recover with some type of fees and donations, but then the cost recovery, what, what is that?
Yeah. I think, we have, we both.
Finish and then I'll go.
Okay, yeah, those are a lot of questions I had that I wrote out, but they're all exactly like what Councilmember Overhouse said, like, we need a year to figure that out. What are our total expenses gonna be for the whole year, or the, how many days are we gonna be open in the summer, what's it gonna cost per day? Like, we need a season to figure that out, so right now, we're doing the best we can. Um, and so yeah, I think if we could get that, that data and then maybe try to extrapolate it a little bit for twenty twenty-six based on what we've done since we've been open to now, that would be great for that twenty twenty-six budget. But I think we're right, I don't think we'll really know a hundred percent until we've had the aquatic facility for an entire year. And we see all the expenses, I mean, what did it, what happened in December when it was cold, and what did we have some expenses then, and you know, on and on, I think, I think we'll have to learn all that. And then another thing that I, I think I'd like to just throw out. Because I think we've talked about this even from the very start of the Aquatic Center. Is that there, we're probably gonna have to supplement it a little bit with the general fund. Like, we might not break even with the aquatics facility, so I think as city council members and we look at those fees. We probably need to think about how much are we gonna be okay with spending in the general budget to make it affordable for our city, and are we gonna spend a little bit more of the general budget to make it five dollars, or are we gonna be happy with seven, or how are we gonna manage that? Um, and so I think I would be on that side of making it a little bit more affordable, and maybe it costs us another twenty-five thousand dollars, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, I think it would be great if our pool was, um, a little bit that, that it was affordable for everyone, and then also maybe some of those rental costs too. The, the one for seven hundred dollars an hour seems a, a little bit high to me, but, um, I haven't looked around at what everybody else is, but, um, but maybe that, that, that one seems to me like maybe nobody might do that because it's pretty high. So if we're supplementing a little bit, then maybe we would lower that a little bit, because we know that it's gonna rent it for that amount. And so those were some of the things that I was thinking about, and I look forward to a, a good discussion about this when we have really good accurate numbers for a whole year.
Yeah, we, we can dial in those, those actual hour clock, hourly costs between staff and, and, and the pool chemicals and everything else, then we can kind of get an idea what those, what those rental, per hour rentals would be.
Right, yeah.
You said to clarify, Todd, could, when you mentioned free swim. That's not free, it was, you also noted that you brought in two hundred thousand dollars of sponsorship to pay for that free swim, how many days was that?
We had, uh, fifty, uh, let me see, paid public sessions, thirty-eight, is that correct? Yeah, yeah, and I, I think they were coming in right at twenty-two, twenty-one hundred, two thousand? I'm sorry. For the recess sessions?
So basically, we did, our prediction, based off the study, was that it would cost, it costs us roughly two thousand dollars per session. So we asked sponsors to cover that two thousand dollar cost. And that'd be by the end of the season, we'll have, uh, twenty-one twenty-one full sessions that will be totally sponsored by local businesses and families.
And you said how many are left?
Uh, estimated, uh, total paid public session.
Of thirty-eight. Just so, just about, I think we have about eight or three sessions.
Okay.
Two weeks, sorry.
Yeah, that's very commendable, how the, you know, the community has stepped forward and it is a great start for, for facilities, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Todd?
Your honor, if there are no other questions, I'd make a motion to approve resolution F four oh two.
I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution F four zero two, the twenty twenty-five charges and fees. Any final questions, comments, all in favor say aye.
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 Post nay. Thank you, Todd, resolution F four zero two passes. Uh, resolution F four zero three, this is the twenty twenty-five S R T C Saline Road Preservation Project Funding Agreement, Todd or Dan?
I'm gonna ask Dan to do a second round here, you're going back.
So yes, this is, uh, the funding agreement, uh, with S R T C for the grinding overlay and ADA ramp improvements to Saline Road. Uh, the amount we are receiving is seven hundred sixteen thousand nine dollars. Uh, we have a thirteen point five percent city, city match to go with that.
Uh, we have a thirteen point five percent city city match to go with that. Uh, this project, we originally were looking to do from Presley Drive, go down to nine oh four with the funds that we received, which were less than we asked. I believe we asked for a hundred and two thousand. Uh, that's going to get as far as Lincoln Street, Presley to Lincoln. So this is a good start. We're, uh, we're looking at T I B grant to pick up the rest of the project. And this is for the twenty six, twenty nine, uh, funding cycle. So with that, we'd like, uh, to ask for council's permission from Mayor signing the agreement. Yep, any questions?
Thanks, Dan. Questions for Dan? It's always good to receive money from other entities.
Your Honor.
Well, is this your work, Vince, on S R T C?
The the board gave out a toll of forty million dollars and we were
I mean, you gotta be at the table or you won't get anything. And you just say we're gonna get to nine oh four from Presley with.
Currently, yeah, currently we were to Lincoln from Presley and we're looking to get to nine oh four. Just applying for. So it's a good start. At least if nothing else, we'll get a good chunk of the room done if we don't receive any other accounts.
So I'll second your motion.
Thank you. A motion to second to approve resolution F four zero three, the agreement for the S R T C Salamane Road Preservation Project. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dan. Resolution F four zero three passes. And finally, resolution F four zero four, and I guess I can queue this up. Um, I have asked and they have graciously accepted our Public Works Director, Todd Abelman, and Finance Director, Cindy Niemeyer. Um, I'd like to, I appointed them as co-interim city administrators while I recruit and hire the next city administrator. And I wanted to bring that to you guys for your confirmation. Um, they've already stepped into the role a hundred percent, and I appreciate the support. Yeah, so there's that. I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions for me. And I think, uh, I think the three of us will work very well together moving the city forward. And again, this is just, uh, just confirming my appointment for those two folks.
How how interim are we expecting this to be?
This depends on the the recruitment process. It could take, it could take four, three, four, or five months. It depends on the how how deep they go into the recruitment, how quickly we can find somebody. But we're going to start as soon as possible. I'm going to provide proposals to you all to take a look at here. Hopefully next council. I'll get a handful of proposals. We'll we'll find the right fit for the city of G and then we'll go from there.
I think the only question I had, I was just wondering, um, I mean, it, I know that's a big position to step into for both of them. Um, and they're already pretty you have, they got big positions already. Um, is the ten percent, I just want to make sure I read that, like, that covers their overtime or is it overtime plus ten? Like, how does that? Their salaries?
Ten percent of what their current, their current base rate is.
Okay.
So during the time and we added two weeks after we hire because there might be a transition period between the new city administrator and and then I mean, they're still going to be doing their their normal
Yeah.
department head jobs. And I'm not taking myself out of the
Okay.
picture at all. So I think between the three of us, we have wonderful department heads anyway. So all of us have been working really well together during this, during this transition. So I can just.
Okay.
Ten percent is pretty standard. And you're just splitting it two ways. That helps. So you got a three, three-way
Yeah.
Situation. And then six months is pretty typical to recruit. I mean, it takes time to, uh, bring in a headhunter and then they get set up and recruiting. And so figure five to six months where you get other full time. So you don't want to cut corners.
Yeah, no.
No.
It's an important position.
It just seems like a lot of work for them to take on. So I just, you know.
If you get, if you get those that are willing to do it, I'd take it and run.
Well, yeah, I know. Yeah, that's. Okay.
I'm not kidding. Anyway.
More like a motion. Did she make a motion?
I gotta look at the notes now.
Four oh four.
Um, so yeah, I, if there are no further questions, I'd make a motion to approve our resolution F four oh four.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve resolution F four zero four, the appointment of interim co-city administrators Cindy Niemeyer and Todd Abelman. Uh, any final questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Thank you all. And thank you, Todd and Cindy, for sure. That completes our action items. Um, staff report to Todd, did you want to talk about that conservation easement at all? Now, just to keep that conversation going.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're 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 kind of taking a look at, uh, approximately a hundred acres or virtually a hundred acres out in our wetlands. Uh, working with, um, uh, partners, uh, uh, around the Spokane Airport, uh, to go into a conservation easement. Um, we should be bringing back, uh, some type of resolution and and an easement. We're reviewing that right now. So I'll probably run it by, uh, uh, Public Works, uh, to that. And you should be receiving that through full council.
Thanks. Any other department heads wish to share anything or staff reports? My report, my report pretty quick. Thank you, Todd, Cindy, all department heads and employees for all your support over the last several months. And I I appreciate your dedication to the city a hundred percent. Uh, council reports. Teresa.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, we're gonna have Public Works Committee meeting tomorrow morning at seven AM rather than Thursday. If that works. Steve and Todd will all be there. It'd be great. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Vince.
I have nothing tonight.
Uh, Jackie, did you have anything?
Um, opioid abatement council is on Thursday, so I'll have it updated our next meeting.
Thanks, Jackie. Danielle?
Um, I'd just like to say congratulations to Dan Curly for the Parks and Rec Director. I'm excited. We have one, so.
Mark? Uh, good to be back. And since we have Dan in the room as well, uh, and, um, just got back and got to see everything. Great job on the aquatic facility. Looks great. It's awesome. And, uh, my grandkids thank you greatly for another spot to play with their pops. So, uh, good job.
And finally, I'd like to ask, uh, for a motion to defer our executive session until our next city council.
Move.
Second. Thank you. Motion second to defer our executive session to our next regularly scheduled council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll we'll defer that until our next.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Since.